Not.
Regular meeting on Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty five, this seven began. Please all write some pledge. My billions to the flag of the United States. And can we have any questions to be agenda this evening? No, it doesn't. And moving on to public comment. And as a reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and non repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or her staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that civil speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel for student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed. That will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school policy A C, which provides that this school committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees. On the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share on this this policy will not be allowed to be doing here. Do you have any public comment this evening? Moving on, we have super and generals proposals and updates and first step.
So I just wanted to take a moment to summarize the changes. I'm happy to redo the presentation, but the only shift in that. In the presentation is the reduction of healthcare of the healthcare premiums. So we were at fourteen percent. We were unclear where that was going to come in. We've been very fortunate to get a rate of seven point one percent. So that has reduced the budget and all of the connected cost centers with health insurance. By approximately five hundred and forty one thousand. So if anyone would like to see the budget, I'm happy to the presentation again, I'm happy to do it. Otherwise, I would like to move on and recommend that the approval of the second reading. Of the F one twenty six budget.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
So we need to go into each article. Yeah. So what we'll start with is. Particle one. To see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for regular instruction for the fiscal year. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. And the recommendation is twenty six million, five hundred twenty two thousand, nine hundred thirty three.
So moved.
Second. We vote for each one.
And we're gonna vote for we're gonna vote for each article individually. Yeah, motion and a second for each one.
All in favor?
Seven oh. Article two, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for special education. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Twelve million, one hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred three dollars.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Seven oh. Particle three, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for other instruction. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. One million, five hundred seventy nine.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Particle four, to see what some school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for student and staff support. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Five million, eight hundred eighty seven thousand, nine hundred fifty eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Seven oh. Particle five, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for system administration. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. One million, six hundred twenty one thousand, one hundred seventy nine dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Particle six, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for school administration for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Three million, two hundred twenty two thousand, five hundred eighty five dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Article seven, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses. For the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Two million, two hundred forty nine thousand, seven hundred twenty eight dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Article eight, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Six million, six hundred thirty one thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Article nine. Article nine, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Recommended amount, two million, three hundred eighty thousand.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Article ten, to see what some the school administrative unit will be authorized to expend for all other expenditures, which includes. Twenty five thousand for food service program support for the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The recommended amount is one hundred thirty eight thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Seven oh. Article eleven, to see what some the district unit will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve. As described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Recommended amount, sixty two million, three hundred forty nine thousand, one hundred sixty eight dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Particle twelve, to see if. The Bangor School Department will appropriate three hundred ninety seven dollars, seven hundred, three hundred, excuse me, three hundred ninety seven thousand, seven hundred ninety five dollars for adult education. And raise two hundred sixty thousand dollars as the local share with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interests and for the. Well being of the adult education program.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh. Particle thirteen, to see if the Bangor School Department will raise eighteen thousand, twenty three dollars to be used for the Bangor School Department's vocational. Educational, education assessment. This assessment is for the U T C adult education budget, which totals two hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred seven dollars and sixty three cents. Of which sixty thousand, eight hundred forty seven dollars and eight cents is supported by sending districts.
Second.
I have a question. I should have thought of this early, but. You these are spouse work for U T C.
Yes.
Should you abstain?
Yes, I should. Okay, thank you.
Not that I think, you know.
Thank you. I will stand for that vote. Okay, so all in favor? Six oh. Six one. Thank you. Yeah. And that's it. How the budget? And I will just move on. It felt ceremonial. But there should be a round of applause.
Thank you. Alright, so next we've got the ratification of the ed tech contracts for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven.
I am recommending ratification of the educational technicians twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven contract.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Seven oh.
Right, sorry. Next, we've got the ratification of teachers' contract for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven.
I'm recommending ratification of the teachers twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven contract.
Can you get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Seven oh.
Sorry, I missed. I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. I apologize.
It's fine. I just, it's very brief. I just wanted to thank Superintendent Robinson and Member Sprague and Chair Luciano for all their hard work on these on these. Negotiations.
I echo that. That's right. That's why I'm still here. And we, I was like, I'll have comments on that, but we'll circle back and. Any more discussion on that? We have voted seven up?
Seven up.
Great, wonderful. So I'm just holding my hand up. Granted, well. And up next, we've got the equivalency agreement for high school credit.
I'm recommending school committee approval of the equivalency agreement for high school credit inter local agreement.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh.
And informational items are next. We've got the superintendent's update.
So just a few updates. From this past couple of weeks. I was able to spend a day or a portion of the afternoon reading to Vine Street students. They had some various adults coming in and administrators across the district. It was really great to sit down and read. I was able to read one of my favorite stories as a child, which was Alexander and the Terrible Harp of the very bad day. Don't know it. I would highly recommend that you check it out. It's a very fun, very fun children's story. I was also able to participate at Down East. With the Mr. Drew Animal Show, which was a highlight of, I think, everyone's day who was there. The live animals come in and. I didn't know this about the Mr. Drew and Animal Show, but he rescues those non native species and keeps them. In a safe environment so that they're not released into our environment. So everyone might have known that. I didn't know that, so that was great. I got to hold the T G lizard. Great. Um, school updates. There are many things, as I've always shared, and you see those in the newsletters. So many happenings across the department and all the all the schools. One highlight I just wanted to share is the junior class parent meeting, and this really is in support of our increasing. Attempts to increase communication outward. So this is, this was led by our high school counselor Sharon Air. She's our new department head in guidance and. It really was a wonderful evening. Over a hundred families were able to attend and it's really a great way to get prepared and kind of step. Stepping into the senior year in the spring before they start, so. Got a lot of great feedback on that. In terms of the district, final quarter began on April seventh, hard to believe. We're right in our final stretch of this full year. Something that's an interesting opportunity that came along was the New York Times Kids Edition. They have been doing an initiative across the country and have highlighted forty five states so far, and we're the first school that they've come to in Maine, the first school department. So they're working with a fourth grade classroom to talk more and teach about opinion pieces. And then there's going to be, there was a two day Zoom session with one of the editors from that process to really focus in on, you know, how do you edit? What does it look like? And, you know, getting items, writing pieces published, and we will get copies eventually at some point, so we'll be sure to share those out. The food service department has gone through two really important reviews and they've gotten. Very, very good reviews. So the procurement administrator review, this is one that happens every five years. And. Only three small findings that need attention, and there's a very long list of items that they checked, so that's very good news. And then we had the triennial review the week of March twenty fourth. And that is for the Child and Adult Care Food Program. And that's the program that we work in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, preparing dinner meals for children and families, and we're in the second year of sponsoring that, so. It's great to see that the reviews are going well. The school-based health clinics, I just wanted to give an update. I was able to meet with Casey, our coordinator. The past week or so, and we had some specific dialogue around how do we get the word out? Because even though we've had them at the high school, had it for high school and now the middle school, there's still several families that are, you know, unclear or and even some staff, so. There's going to be an increase of, you know, having tables set up like at the academic showcase, she was able to do that and was able to gather some more families and educate them on the on the. Opportunities if folks want to join the P C H C clinic. And then also what we've done is kind of restructured where that information was on our website. So now it's. It's not just on the Bangalore High School page, it's on the department itself, and then there's a link on every school. To make sure that anyone who's looking at the website should come across that with the the forms to enroll if they so choose. And in terms of the region and state, we've been able to, thanks to Member riding for the reminder of. Enabling our committee to to be hosted at U T C. So our May thirteenth school committee meeting will be at U T C and. The director Amanda Peterson is going to be offering a tour from five thirty to six thirty prior to that meeting with some light refreshments, and then our meeting time will remain at seven P M. And if if you haven't been there, I think this is going to be a really eye opening experience. There are amazing programs and resources there. And they've done a lot of work in recent years to to make it even better. In terms of the Panquist region, we are monitoring, of course, all of the federal changes. They're still giving us the information that at this time, they don't anticipate any impact in the federal funding, but of course, we're continuing to monitor. And in terms of the ten day notice letter that was shared, no one has actually received that specifically, so it was. I was made aware of it through a main public or an N P R article, so we're monitoring that. The state did get a. An extension on that, so now the new deadline is April twenty fourth, and we've been explicitly told to await guidance and not to do anything with that letter, so. We're kind of in a holding pattern there. And the press update, that is, there's their quarterly meeting, so we haven't had, and that there was an express. Interest in getting some press updates, so those are quarterly meetings, and the next meeting is June first, so they haven't met since our last meeting. Any questions?
Emma Bryn?
I do, and and again, I recognize, first of all, thanks for the update. And I recognize that there isn't a lot of information when we are in a holding pattern. And I'm curious if this deadline does proceed, you said April twenty fourth. And our next meeting is April thirtieth. Is there any expectation that we as a school committee meet before that? How how? I don't know if we would even have that information of it.
I don't anticipate a need. I mean, I would communicate to all of you of whatever the updates are, but it doesn't appear to be something that would need any. Committee meetings or votes. No, it's mainly like a letter that I just want folks to sign. With assurances.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm just to clarify that, is that like individual signatures or as a body?
No, it's like my signature.
Oh, you're.
The school administrative, yeah, the. The school leader.
And we don't need to vote on that, I'm assuming.
It doesn't seem like something that.
Okay.
We would vote on, but again, we're kind of in the middle of waiting on a guidance, so if something came through and said this is an individual determination, then I would definitely bring it. We probably have to call a special meeting, but right now that hasn't been the indication. It sounds like it's going to be a. I guess my sense is that it's going to be a blanket response. Everyone will do this, or everyone will not do this.
I see. From the M S M A and the.
M S M A and the N O E.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification, because it seemed like in the the latest communication of the collective hold on that. I wasn't sure if it was going to be a release of now you all decided to.
It could. We just don't know.
I hope that we collectively. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you. That's very helpful and informative. Thank you. Up next, we've got reports of reassignment.
Reporting the following reassignments, Scott Wood from physical education teacher at Fairmount School to physical education teacher at the Fruit Street School.
Up next, we've got business action items. First up, we've got approval of the regular meeting minutes of March twenty six, twenty twenty five. Can I make it a motion?
I just wanted to recommend the approval of the draft minutes of the March twenty six, twenty twenty five regular school committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Seven oh.
Up next, we have the financial reports from December twenty twenty four and January twenty twenty five.
I'm recommending approval of the December twenty twenty four financial report and the January twenty twenty five financial report.
You get a motion? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Seven oh.
We have the personnel, extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending approval of the following extra duty assignments for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Madison Tritt, first year, point five assistant track coach, Bangor High School. Stephen Early, point five assistant track coach, Bangor High School.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Seven oh.
And we've got the second reading of new revised policies. If you want to think these all together, or do we have a question? Or we got, we have any discussion?
I forget to look up sometimes.
Yeah, so we want to take these all together?
So I'm recommending approval of the second reading of the new and revised policies. I mean, again, these are the M S M A aligned and the letter updating. New policy B E D C quorum, revised policy B E D D, rules of order. Revised policy B E D G minutes, revised policy B E D I, news media. Revised policy B E D F voting method and new policy B E D G A abstentions.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Seven oh.
Thank you. And can we have, I don't have any introduction items, so we've got committee updates and representative reports. Do we have any representatives reports since our last meeting? Was the U T C update?
Yeah, thanks, Emma. I'm happy to give the U T C update. And I happy to share that their skills competition, which is the statewide competition where they demonstrate that their. Aptitude in the specific area of learning, which happened in March, went off without a hitch. We actually had forty five. Students from U T C that medaled, gold medals for Bangor. Bangor had the largest number of students participating in the U T C skills competition. Which is just a really great, obviously an opportunity to demonstrate their skills, but also just a really great way to sort of build morale. For that school that, you know, students are coming in different programs, that they're only there in the morning or only there in the evening, it's a really sort of boost to the entire school. The nationals are in June, and we have a Bangor student going, so that's very exciting. And the bond that was graciously approved in November for those additional resources that will be used for equipment funds will become available in May for. Those purchases to be made, and the board at U T C has been very thoughtful about how these. These funds are being allocated to the different equipment pieces and. It continues to grow. There are eight hundred and sixty applications to consider for U T C this year, which is larger than ever. And really exciting, and mostly I just want to bring your attention to this equivalency agreement for high school credits, which was a. Huge amount of work, not only for U T C, but for all of the sending districts and the leadership in those schools and those high schools, so. Thank you to Dr. Butler and team, everyone that really worked together to look at. If you are a student, regardless of which school you're coming from, if you are participating in any number of the offerings that happen at U T C. You can earn credits towards math, science, English. Because obviously those those classes are so rich in those areas of subject, but knowing that there is. An agreement for every single school that sends students, and we agree collectively that these, this work is worth certain credits. There's an entire binder that both members might have, that fortunately for you, I left in my car, but I can meet you afterwards. That goes through every single class and how many credits you get for which subject. Again, years worth of of examining how they're meeting state objectives based on welding and what that could mean for a. Geometry or chemistry credit, and it's really. So wonderful for these students also that maybe are behind in. Maybe are afraid they won't be able to get to U T C and really dive into their passion. And this meets that expectation that they're able to receive those credits and. Really amazing contributors to our society, so I just wanted to thank everyone whose involvement there was there, and again, welcome you to meet me in the parking lot, and I'll show you the binder.
The summary is the back of.
Yeah, that's not as fun as the whole binder, though. Quick snapshot. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Do we have any other committee updates before we move to student members?
Oh, I'm sorry, since member sprayed.
The scholarship committee met last week. Yeah, I would be happy to. Member John, Joe and I met with the scholarship committee, and mostly I just want to acknowledge that Jerry and Paul and the guidance counselors and everybody else are the ones doing all the work. We had a vigorous discussion. It's a very enjoyable committee. I'm happy to serve on it, and I just want to thank the staff for their hard work. The culmination of a year's worth of work, and there is a lot of generosity in this community for the scholarships, which is always very heartwarming to see.
Thank you. That's wonderful update.
You're welcome.
I don't know the last time we had a scholarship update, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Oh, yes, member.
And there's a question about the scholarship. I know, I'm just not familiar with what the scholarship committee does, so can you just give a brief overview of it?
Since I've already spoken.
I mean, it was a year, so I didn't.
Well, really, Jerry put together a great report of the scholarships that are available, you know, the process by which, you know, those scholarships are being ruled out and just how how that all works. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Yep. We would love for you to attend.
Yeah.
Such a lively conversation. So, I apologize, member crestfallen.
Thank you. So I have a couple exciting things to announce this. Who the play at Bangor High School is tomorrow at seven, Friday at seven, and then Saturday at two. And you can go every single time because there's a new ending each time, so you'll be surprised again and again. We have family fun night or silent auction at the sports arena tomorrow from five to nine. And this is for project graduation, so this project graduation is a little celebration for the seniors after graduation. They all stay together. Stay for a while at the high school, eight to three in the morning, so that should be fun, and at the sports arena, there's food, bowling and arcade games. And at the school, student council is planning a campus cleanup, and they're partnering with various clubs like Seed and N H S to help clean up the school and around the school.
Baseball and softball have double headers this Saturday, and tennis has their home opener Thursday the seventeenth, so people should show out, and we also have spring break coming up.
Thank you. I'm moving on to. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Tan. So this is why I need that.
And this is, this is me being very nitpicky, and I and I don't actually have any questions or comments from the committee, but I. I feel like it's missing from this. It was, okay, it hasn't gone away. It's just.
Twice. It's like from what I can tell, it looks like we have just, it just appears once now towards the end. We have taken our agenda and put it in alignment with the M S M A suggested exchange.
Okay.
So we shouldn't have two places to have comments for ourselves. And again, making a lot of wild. It's just, I noticed it and was like, probably while we're getting things into alignment.
Yeah.
But.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good, okay. And next up, we've got, uh, information items, so the next several important dates, Wednesday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, seven P M, Bangor High School Library. Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, tour of UTC United Technology Center, five thirty P M, six thirty P M. Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, seven P M, United Technology Center Auditorium. Wednesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, Bangor High School Library. Thank you, uh, February. Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, seven P M, Bangor High School Library. Wednesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, seven P M, Bangor High School Library. And now, questions and comments from the committee, and I'm gonna go ahead and go first, just to comment on negotiations process, so. Again, thank you so much to everyone, it was a really, uh. Engaged process, um, thank you, member Sarette, and member Sprague. Uh, it was a lot, it was wonderful, I liked it, I thought it was great. Member Sarette, you were helpful as well. To be part of, so really excited we have that completed and look forward to the ongoing negotiations with the additional units.
Member Bryden? I would just like to echo, um, recognizing as a committee member how much work that was for Member Stray and Member Luciano. For Director Payman and Superintendent Robinson and all of the, um. Uh, representatives from the union. I know it's a lot of days and nights, and, um, I'm really grateful that we have a great contract, so thank you very much for your work.
John.
I had the opportunity to go to the All City Chorus Concert last week at Bangor High School with the four or five middle school and high school. Um, and I just wanted to thank all of the music educators for all the hard work that they put into, that's a lot of work to get everybody together. And for those who didn't attend that concert, um, it was the return of the high school jazz. Choir, right, a small group that did a phenomenal job, and I know they were really excited to bring that back. We have some really talented students at Bangor High School. And then to see all of the grades come together for one big performance, um, just getting them all up there on that stage, I know that my kiddo was thrilled to be involved. Um, and just wanted to thank everybody who, you know, makes music a priority here in our schools, we appreciate you very much, and I look forward to continuing to be part of that as my kiddo grows up.
One else, does it mean? No? In that case, you move to adjourn, I'm gonna get a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?